Good afternoon, and welcome to the City Council meeting of May 17, 2021. All rise and salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America.
... and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Janino. Here. Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Keith.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Nowosowski.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo.
Present.
Here, Councilor Serino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Visconti.
Here.
Here, and Council President Zambudo.
Here.
Here, a quorum is present. Calendar item number two, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of May 3, 2021.
So what is the... All in favor, all opposed? Councilor Guanasso has a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, this past week, the City of Revere lost a longtime resident by name of Louise Fulton. She's the wife of the former Revere Police Chief Harold Fulton, and for many years, she was the administrator of the Revere Retirement Board. And her words of wisdom to many, many employees of the City of Revere were very, very valuable because she put people on the right path in the direction as to how to treat their retirement, and she was wonderful at it. I wish I had learned from her. And at this time, Mr. President, I think it'd be respectful to us and for us to have a moment of silence in memory of Louise Fulton.
Moment of silence.
Thank you.
Councilor Keith has a moment of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since our last meeting, I wanted to make the residents aware, and I also wanted to offer the council's condolences to the family of Vincent and Aglia. Vinnie, as many knew in the building, was a worker for the DPW but also helped service this building specifically. And he was well respected and liked by his colleagues, but specifically, the members of City Hall really appreciated how thoughtful and how kind Vincent was. And I just wanted to offer our condolences from the City Council to his family. Thank you.
We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you.
Calendar item number three, the City Council will award Revere resident Alondra Torres a certificate of commendation for her extraordinary efforts in establishing the La Colaborativa Club at Malden Catholic High School last month.
Councilor Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is actually a really, probably one of the best parts of being a city councilor. So a couple of weeks ago, I went to Malden Catholic, where we cannot present this citation, this certificate of commendation to Alondra in person in the chamber. I went to Malden Catholic and met with Alondra, and we had a little bit of a ceremony over at the school. And so Alondra Enciso Torres is a 15-year-old Revere resident, lives in Ward 6. She's a sophomore at Malden Catholic High School. And she has been working with La Colaborativa, which is an organization in the city of Chelsea that provides basic necessities to families in need through the pandemic. Councilor and Representative Janino and I, back in April, visited La Colaborativa, and the operations over there are pretty incredible in how many families that they are, the organization is servicing. So Alondra had been volunteering at La Colaborativa with her mom Cynthia, and she was inspired because at Malden Catholic, they teach the Zavarian values of simplicity, humility, compassion, trust, and zeal. And Alondra took what she's been learning at MC in her volunteer time, and she created an extracurricular club at MC for La Colaborativa. And what this extracurricular club is doing is they're raising money, they're having a toiletry drive right now, they're planning some other events for the summer to raise money and awareness of the efforts of La Colaborativa, which is helping families in Chelsea, Everett, Revere, the surrounding area. So on Friday, when I went to Malden Catholic, we actually had the opportunity, I had the opportunity to attend a meeting of this extracurricular club, and I was very impressed with Alondra's leadership style, and she's a very well-spoken young woman, and I believe she has a bright future ahead of her. And I was very impressed, and also not only with just Alondra, but with the other students, one of which is Ms. Luna Murray, with the family that owns Murray's Tavern here on Broadway in Revere, another Revere family. All her friends and classmates are doing wonderful work, and I wanted to commend Alondra for having the foresight at 15 years old to establish this club. So Alondra is on the line tonight, and I believe she might have a few words to say. But first, I would like to read the certificate of commendation, which reads, "The City of Revere Certificate of Commendation in acknowledgment of her extraordinary efforts in establishing the La Colaborativa Club at Malden Catholic High School. Special recognition is hereby accorded to Alondra Enciso Torres. Alondra's wherewithal in launching the La Colaborativa Club will help families in need by brainstorming means of helping the increasing numbers of families in the area experiencing homelessness due to the pandemic. Her club has garnered a large following at Malden Catholic, which will expedite the coordination of resources and necessities for the vulnerable people in our community. In witness whereof, the certificate of commendation is gratefully bestowed by the City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens, this seventh day of May in the year of our Lord 2021, and of the Independence of the United States of America, the 244th, attested whereby Ashley E. Melnick, City Clerk, and Anthony T. Zambudo, Council President, offered by Councilor Serino." So congratulations, Alondra. And Madam Clerk, if we could turn the floor over to Alondra, if she would like to say a few words.
Can, if you don't mind, can I call on my colleagues first and then...
Oh, yes.
Okay. Councilor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start by commending my colleague in Ward 6 on this wonderful motion. When Councilor Serino first told me about this wonderful young woman, I was really, really excited to meet her and excited to hear more about what she did. And I had the pleasure of running into her by accident at the ribbon cutting for Murphy's. And I met her, and I met Luna, and you know, Ricky, when you just explained the qualities that MC teaches and those characteristics, I think these two young women exemplify them. And you really can, you can read about someone, and you can hear about what they're doing, but when you actually have the opportunity to meet someone and to talk to them and really hear about what made them passionate about something and why they want to do it, you gain a whole different understanding for them and a different respect. So Alondra's a wonderful young woman, and if this is what she's accomplishing at 15, I can't wait to see what she accomplishes next. So thank you, Councilor Serino. I think it's a wonderful, wonderful motion.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Throw you two and Councilor Serino. I wanted to congratulate Alondra more so when I shared with my packet, sometimes I share with my family, and we read it. My wife Jennifer and some of her peers were very excited to see her name. Alondra is no surprise to me. She's an alumnus of Revere Pop Warner and was a phenomenal cheerleader and person associated with the group. And she's gone on to do great things at Malden Catholic, as well as with the wonderful Luna. So congratulations from Revere Pop Warner and Coach Jen, and Coach Jen, both Jens. I wanted to wish you, wanted to say congratulations, and thank you.
Let me just say that I'm totally impressed. The council from Ward 6, when he first spoke about this, it warmed my heart. But to also hear that the Revere roots and the great Catholic education this young woman is getting, it's a wonderful night here on the City Council. So Alondra, if you want to say something, please go ahead.
Good evening, City Council of Revere. Thank you so much for having me and my mother join you today. It means a lot. I am really happy to have received this award and these citations. It really does mean a lot, and it always starts off as something small. You know, I never thought it would become so big. I did not see it becoming so big, but never underestimate yourself is something I've learned through this. It is really important to me that we help these families in need. And as Councilman Serino saw in our last meeting, it is important to many of us in the Malden Catholic community as well. We are all joined together, Girls Division and Boys Division, to help each other out, to help other families out. We come together, we meet, we come up with ideas. We have more ideas for the year, and we talk about them with faculty, administration. Administration and faculty are also welcomed in the club. Anyone can come in, and anyone can throw in any ideas, and that's what makes it so unique. That's what makes it so great because anyone can be a part of it, and everyone's helping out, everyone is coming in, no matter, no matter who you are, no matter how different you are, everyone's coming in, and we're all helping out with the same cause. We all have the same intuitive, and we really want to help these families out. I'm a daughter of two immigrants, and it really, that inspires me because I get to help out people of all kinds, people like my parents and other people too, and it just means a lot because I am glad to be that person to have founded a club that is helping so many other people. Thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you so much. We're inspired by you.
Mr. President.
Councilor Rotundo.
May I ask Alondra a question?
Go right ahead.
What do you want to be when you get older? Because what you are right now is marvelous. I mean, you are... So this is a city of immigrants, and you're supporting and helping people that are immigrants. It is so important. What do you want to be when you get older?
I have yet to figure that out. But what I do know, what I do know is that I want to keep going with this and these footsteps. This is, I feel like everyone's passion gets to them at a certain moment. I feel like mine is starting off right now. I think I'm just at the beginning of what I want to be, and I know that I'll figure it out one day. But being here tonight, present in this meeting, is motivating and pushing me and keeping me going to become better each and every day and to be in more meetings like these.
And you will be. God bless you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you. God bless.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Next up is the Public Works Subcommittee Report.
Chairman Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we had a subcommittee meeting earlier tonight, and there were four issues that came up, two motions, 21-126 regarding providing water and sewer to which replace residents, and that was withdrawn by Council Rotundo. The next item was 21-133 regarding, Council Rotundo, regarding proposed ordinance about mending the trash barrels and allowing non-type city barrels, and that was left on the table. We also had a little discussion, update from Paul Argenzio about the city on progress, that things are moving along, and hopefully within next year, they'll start building the new city act. And the last item was a motion that Council Rotundo had put in. It wasn't on this agenda, but it was a motion that was passed regarding specific hydrants that he was questioning the activity on and whether or not they were in proper working order. And we did hear from the superintendent of-
Mr. President, point of order.
State your point.
Could the councilor speak up? We can't hear him.
I think he might be having some computer problems. Could you try to raise your volume, counselor?
I tried that once, and I'll do try it again.
Now, that's a first, that people can't hear higher.
Yeah. Okay, I'm up as high as I can go, so you have to bear with me. Let me say that the last item was about a specific hydrant that the council was questioning, and John Chermello from the Water and Sewer Division brought us up to date of how many were inspected, changed, and repaired. So that seems to be up to date. So that's our report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Madam Clerk.
Up next is the Appointments Subcommittee Report.
Chairman Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this afternoon, the Appointments Subcommittee had five items on the agenda. The first, Jay Marcasian's son is a licensed drainlayer, did not appear, so we will place that on hold. Second was Tufts Construction as a licensed drainlayer, and that we will place on hold. And very proudly, we did have a couple of people that showed up. Arm Construction, licensed drainlayer, and that was approved by the Subcommittee, and I asked that the City Council vote this out favorably. Also acted out favorably, was United Civil, and they also appeared before the Subcommittee, and we asked that you vote them out favorably also. And the third item, Jade Durenzo, and licensed drainlayer, and he also appeared before the Appointments Subcommittee, and we voted him out favorably. Mr. President, I ask that the three names that did appear, Arm's Construction, United Civil, and Jade Durenzo, be approved as a licensed drainlayers this evening. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, we'll take all-
That concludes the Appointments Subcommittee Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll take all those three up at once. Madam Clerk.
Shall the City Council confirm the drainlayer appointments as reported by Councilor Guanasso? Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Serino?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed. Calendar item number 11, communication from the city auditor relative to the certification of free cash, June 2020.
I see Mr. Viscay is in the audience. Rich?
Hello. Good evening, councilors. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right. Sorry, I'm in South Dakota right now, so-
I heard that. That's very nice of you.
A little lousy, I apologize, but yes, I didn't want to jump on here. Thank you. Thank you. These are the standard transfers that we get when free cash is awarded. As you can see, the free cash number certainly was affected by the pandemic as the revenues were weighed down and budgets were being tight. Promote our fiscal policies and procedures that say that we had to put 50% of our free cash into our stabilization as well as 20% into our capital improvement program. We also putting another $250,000 in to our other post-employment benefit, otherwise known as OPEB account, for retiree health insurance. So again, I'm here to answer any questions. I also believe we have 50% of our water and soil retained earnings being transferred into our water and soil stabilization fund as our policies provide. So again, just was hoping that we can pass these so that we can figure out how we're going to use the rest of the free cash as we get toward the end of the year and budget season. Thank you very much.
Okay. I think we kind of heard this. These are standard transfers here. So any councilors have any questions for the auditor on this? Or for the chief financial officer, I should say? Seeing none, I imagine we can go right to a vote on these. Madam Clerk. Four separate votes. Correct.
On the first, shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $199,373 to the general fund stabilization fund from free cash? Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Serino? Yes. Councilor Visconti? Yes. And Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. The second request is, shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $265,831 to the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund from general fund free cash? Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Voting yes. Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Serino?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Visconti? Yes. And Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. The third motion, shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $250,000 to the OPEB Trust Fund from general fund free cash? Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Guanasso? Yes, Counsel Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Serrino?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. And the last, shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $98,294 to the Water and Sewer Stabilization Fund from Water and Sewer Free Cash? Counsel Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Serrino?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. Calendar item number 12, communication from the city auditor relative to Massachusetts' General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 and 1/2, Department Revolving Funds.
Mr. Viskey, do you want to say something about this before I order to a public hearing?
Sure. Just briefly, Mr. President, I just wanted to let the council know that as a matter of marriage general law, if there are any updates or edits to departmental revolving funds that have been ordained by the council, it has to go before the council for that update. So over the past several fiscal years, in between ordained these, we have come to realize that some of them just aren't being any more and we've removed them. And there are a couple of new ones that we've added to the demands.
I'm not sure-- I'm not sure they have too good internet out there in Idaho.
I'm sorry, but you could put it into a committee, certainly. I just wanted to give a brief explanation. Sorry about the bad connection.
That's okay. So this is going to a public hearing? On June 7th, I should say.
Calendar item number 13, communication from the mayor requesting that the Ways and Means Subcommittee hold and obey its adoption of Massachusetts' General Laws, Chapter 32B, Sections 21, 22, and 23.
Placed on file.
Calendar item number 14, communication from the mayor regarding the city's accepting RPA funds from the Department of the Treasury.
This is going to Ways and Means.
Calendar items 15 through 20 are relative to appointments to the Elder Affairs Subcommittee.
Appointments Subcommittee.
Onto motions. Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Counsel Rotundo that the mayor be requested to create assistance outreach for COVID-19 burial assistance from FEMA in Revere.
Counsel Rotundo?
Speaks for itself.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted.
Calendar item number 22, motion presented by Counsel Rotundo that the mayor look into the feasibility of creating online and in-office resources through SUDI to help those being trafficked in Revere.
Speaks for itself.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted.
Calendar item number 23, motion presented by Counsel Rotundo that the City Council requests the state delegation to amend the open meeting law through legislation in which translation of multiple foreign languages are used in the notification process on all spectrums of medium used to comply with the current legislation.
Counsel Rotundo?
Thank you, Mr. President. This issue strikes to the point of the meters on the beach in which the one meeting that they had, there was limited translation. And I think state delegation is working hard to help our community, and I think this might be something that they can move forward if it's not in place already. I do know under Senator Barrios, he mandated that translation be done in the emergency rooms and throughout hospitals in order to ensure better care, and I would hope this could be done to ensure better government. Thank you.
Counselors Janino and Serrino are recused from this motion. Any other colleagues want to speak on this? Legislative affairs.
Calendar item number 24, motion presented by Counsel Rotundo that the mayor or his designee provide the City Council with an update as to how the city collects data, curb cuts, point of sale, permit fees, and other such data.
I'm going to let you speak even though you spoke on three, but a couple of them were--
Speaks for itself.
Speaks for itself. This one speaks for itself? Thank you. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed.
Don't have a heart attack, Tony. I'm not there to help you.
Calendar item number 25, motion presented by Counsel Janino that the City Council approve the attached resolution declaring May 2021 as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Counsel Janino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very brief. So last meeting, I put in a late motion. This is just a formal resolution to accompany that late motion, that this is national language that's used by the organization that coordinates this month. So, thank you.
Anybody else on the motion? All in favor, all opposed? Oh, no. Please read it.
On the resolution, Mental Health Awareness Month, whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans face challenges in life that can impact their mental health, especially during a pandemic, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there are practical tools that all people can use to improve their mental health and increase resiliency, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention and treatment efforts. Therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts, does hereby proclaim May 2021 as Mental Health Month in the City of Revere. The Revere City Council, on behalf of its citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the City of Revere, we promise to commit to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted.
Calendar item number 26, motion presented by Counsel McKenna that the mayor request northeast mosquito control to spray McMackin Field for mosquitoes. With the recent rain, floodwaters are accumulating in this field, which has become a breeding ground for mosquitoes and directly affecting abutting neighbors.
Counsel McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I would like to address this problem, McMackin Field. Counselor Keith and I have been inundated with calls about this field, and I just would like to tell the residents out there that Revere does not own this property. It is owned by a private entity, and Revere is doing everything to try to acquire it. The park is privately owned, and it is responsible for the condition it's in. All we can do is find the owners and make sure the field is cleaned. So I just want people to know that this is not a piece of Revere property. It's privately owned. The field has water, still water there, and so we are going to spray to prevent a massive amount of mosquitoes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Have we received a ruling from the city solicitor as to whether we can spray?
I don't think so.
Counsel Keith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Like Counsel McKenna mentioned, you know, I receive a lot of calls in the field because of my affiliation with some of the youth baseball programs in the city. And, you know, there isn't, and I just, you know, to say it again, there isn't an affiliation with the McMackin Fields. There isn't, and I just want to clarify for the record, there isn't a league. There hasn't been a league for a number of years. There hasn't been a fruitful league for even, probably closer to 10 years. This has been an issue that may have been exacerbated by some of the flooding issues, but the park has been neglected by the board, whoever you want to call them. You know, we've asked them to come in front of the City Council, we've offered to help, we've offered to work together, we've offered so many, you know, I know that a few different administrations have offered some form of support, but it's going to be up to the people who oversee that league or oversee that field or that are on the board, whoever's left, to come out and say, you know, probably going to have to turn it over to the city if the city's going to pay to repair it and make it into some sort of playable shape. And that's what the field is intended for. It's intended to be used for recreational use, children, recreational use, or anyone's recreational use for that matter right now, because it's better than what's there right now. So if you really care about what's happening down there and you're on the board, come on out, come work with the city, and we'll work together to make sure that the field is being used what it's intended for. And it's as simple as that. I haven't talked to anyone on the city side that doesn't agree with that opinion. And I'm not going to get into all the semantics, but stop hiding. I don't know what they're trying to hide, because if that's what it seems like's happening, there's all these rumors swirling, and I'm not going to get involved in that. But come on out, work with the city so we can repair the field properly, if you actually care about the field. If there's something else, that's something else you don't want to talk about, that's fine. But if you care about the field, if you care about the condition of it, if you care about actual the kids in the city having a place to play, then come on out and work with us. Simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Keith. Counsel Visconti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I couldn't agree more with my colleagues. My question is, do we know if the private owner is being cited for leaving the property in complete disarray? Because I'm not sure if that's the case.
I can answer that question, Mr. President.
Counsel McKenna, you want to answer the question?
Thank you. So every time, so I just want to say the history is we've sat, the mayor and the administration have sat with the private owners--
Half hour.
--on this field, and we just can't get them to agree on what we're asking. So they walk, we don't, the meeting's over. But we have, every time the field's in disarray, I put a fine in. I get down there, I take a picture. We even, and they were saying that they couldn't cut the grass near the fence, so we got a private landscaper to go in with the machine and cut the grass, and they're supposed to pay. So we have cited them. Actually, I just put a fine in last week with the condition, and I find them all the time. So I don't, I don't know, you know? It's up for them, like Counsel Keith said, it's up to them to care about the kids, care about the field. It's a sore eye for the city. And you know what? Give it back to the city, because we gave it to them for a dollar back in the day when Guy Melly was around. So give it back to the city and let us do, let the kids enjoy this beautiful field instead of letting it sit there for 10 years in water, in disarray. You know, do the right thing.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Counsel. That answers, I think that answers Counsel Visconti's question. Does that answer your question?
It does, but what I'd like to see is more fines being given, you know, and hitting them in the pocket, pocketbook. So, you know, as fines continue to grow and all of a sudden, it might not be a number that is attractive to them, that's going to raise a red flag, but as those fines continue to grow, then it might be an issue. And I think the only way to do that is continue to fine them on a regular basis. And if they're not paying those fines, then the interest and so forth is just going to grow, and, you know, we'll get them sooner or later. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. As someone who used to play baseball at that park known as Little Fenway, it has a special spot in my heart, and because I used to hang out there even when we weren't playing games. But it's not the park I used to know. It's dilapidated, it's a complete eyesore, as Counsel McKenna said. I had a friend of mine last week who hasn't lived in Revere for a while, but grew up in Revere, and they happened to drive by McMackin Park, and they were just astonished by what became of McMackin Park. It was just embarrassing because it looks like a field of weeds. That's what it is. And it's kind of, hundreds of thousands of vehicles probably travel through that road each week, neighboring cities, people not from Revere. And it actually sets an image, a negative image of our city, and it makes it look, we as elected officials do not care about our city because we just let, people don't know better, they don't know it's not owned by the city. So it's a negative outlook on elected officials and city leadership and department heads, and it trickles down, and it makes it seem like we don't care about our city. And we do. And we need the board of McMackin Park to work with us. I've been kind of quiet on this issue because, as I said, this park had a spot in my heart, but it's no longer the park I know or I grew up at. So we need to correct the situation immediately. We need to get them to the table.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Rotundo?
Thank you. This is a half-hour conversation. This isn't a five-minute conversation. This is a half-hour conversation. Here it goes. One, either you meet with the city and you work with the city and we help you repair it and bring it back to its best use, or we take it by eminent domain. It's that simple. I mean, quite frankly, that's what it is. I mean, underneath the Rizzo administration, the Orego administration, they've all tried to work with this group, and where are we getting? No place. Where are our kids going? No place. So there's only one or two ways of doing this. Half-hour conversation about how to work together, or take it by eminent domain. No more games. You can find them all you want. We have a right to take the park and utilize it for recreation purposes underneath the law, and we can go that way. We gave it to them for a dollar. I mean, there should be a little commitment back to the community after that. Guy Melly's roving over in his grave right now.
I was just thinking that.
Yeah. I mean, Guy would never tolerate this baloney. Would fire them all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, if another entity owns the property, because they had prior recreational activities there, is it being tax exempt? Is anybody paying real estate taxes on it? If not, maybe we should, maybe we should be collecting taxes. And if they're in arrears, maybe that should be part of the fines that would be requested. Like any other resident in this city that has a piece of property, they have to pay fines on it if it's in, you know, a bad shape. And once those fines start adding up, they're adding up at 16% interest, and that becomes eventually a lien on the property. So perhaps maybe that's the area we should go in, looking toward maintaining the property. I know I've had properties in certain sections of my ward where we brought in a private contractor through the Health Department. We paid the contractor and we added that money on as a lien on the property, and that can be done here, just like any other entity in the city. Once you get to a certain point, you take the property. And if it's a purchase agreement, those monies are part of the purchase agreement. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. And that's a good point about the taxes. Counsel Janino?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I have to say, since I'm one of the last ones to speak, a lot of my colleagues have already said a lot of the points that I was going to bring up, but I think the one thing I can end with is I really agree with my colleague Counsel Rotundo in this scenario. You know, I think we're past the point of fines, we're past the point of working with them. I've been on this council for 10 years, and that park's been in disrepair for at least eight of those 10. And it's a disgrace. And, you know, if a property is abandoned, a city has the ability to take it by eminent domain. And now we're at a point where we need to put some teeth into it, step up, and take the property back and fix it. I understand it's going to take time, it's going to take money, you know, there needs to be some infrastructure work done to fix the drainage, but we owe it to our community to take that back. We don't have a lot of green space in the City of Revere, so I think it's time to step up, take it back by eminent domain, stop playing games with the fines, because we're not going anywhere, and it's just a match about, you know, who's tougher at this point, them or us. And I think it's time we show them that we own the city, we're going to take it back, we're going to fix it, and our kids deserve to play there, because at this rate, nothing-- gonna fix it, and our kids deserve to play there, because at this rate, nothing's gonna happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Novoseltsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm glad you saw my hand. I don't have the hand, that option on my, my computer, but I had a discussion with the mayor about this several weeks ago, and it's very, very upsetting to drive by there and see the condition that, that park. It used to be an honorable park, and was the best-known park, field in the states. And like it was mentioned before, it was called Little Fenway. And I'll never forget going down there and spending time down there. But I mentioned to the mayor that, you know, when everybody drives by there, they have the, we have the fence there, and everybody looks down and sees the condition. Why can't we either request, or the city do it, put up one of those covers over the fence, so people, when they're driving by, can't see the condition down below? Do the whole length of the fence, you know, from one end to the, to the other? And at least give us a little savings of face? So I don't know if we wanna make a motion to that effect, that's a Joanne's motion, but I, I think we ought to make a move on this. That's number one. And number two, we ought to put this into, I think we have a Parks and Recreation Committee, and Subcommittee from the council, put it in there and start making noise about it. Time to get off the stick. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'll just give my little two cents on this. Number one, this obviously is a health issue, and, and so the Board of Health should be acting on this. But what I would like to see is some kind of a legal ruling that we're allowed to spray for mosquitoes there, where it's right now not our property. But I think we, I think for a long enough time, we have, we've tried to work with these people, we offered to repair the field, they had to turn, turn the field back over to the city. I think somebody thinks they get a pot of gold at the end of a rainbow here, but they don't. What's gonna end up happening is, they're gonna be hated, and we're gonna end up back with the property, and we're gonna finally fix it. I, I like the short-term solution of Councilor Novoseltsky, to cover the fence for now while we're in the process, if we can find the funds to do that, and, and we can legally do it, and also spray for the mosquitoes if we can legally do that.
Mr. President.
Councilor Rotundo, I wanna end this. Go ahead.
We might need to be mindful about covering it up of the issue of safety. If someone, for some reason, is down there and is hurt, they would not be observed. I would pass that up to Paul Capizzi before we go forward, something of that nature. And more importantly, I would also have them all get their books.
We can add that, we can add that to the four or five other legal challenges we have with, with spraying, with all this other stuff. So we can add that, whether, whether or not that's a legal thing to cover the fence, but it's.
Cuz it's not our property.
You've sprayed it before? Okay. All right, so we're gonna stick to the motion to spray. On the spraying, on the motion, all in favor, all opposed?
So voted.
Calendar item number 27, motion presented by Councilor Morabito, that the mayor requests the fire chief to conduct an inspection of all city-owned buildings and provide the city council with an inspection report determining whether buildings pass or fail fire safety
All set, Mr. President?
Councilor Morabito, I'm sorry.
No problem. So I put this motion forth, not because I am aware that there is a city building that is not in fire code. I put this motion forth because I believe it's very beneficial if the city council is provided with an assessment report of which buildings are within fire code and which ones feel fire code. The reason being that it will allow this honorable body to correct any issues going forth also, especially where there are residents and workers in that bill, in our buildings throughout the day, I think it's very important to get an, a report from the Fire Department to, and correct any issues if any of our buildings are not up to public fire safety And that's it.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors? Okay, I'm gonna refer this to public safety, so we can have Paul Cheever's and others up before us to let us know where we stand. Public safety.
Excuse me, Mr. President? The, the motion is to have them do an inspection, so they can provide us with a report. So they can't really speak to a report if it's in public safety for a report they haven't conducted yet.
Well, I like to think that we know where all our buildings stand in the city, and he can give us a report there, if, that if we need a, if we need a, a further inspection of buildings, then we can go forward with that. I, I think that, I, I like to think all city buildings are inspected regularly.
I would hope so.
So let's take it from the committee. If we find out that they're not, then we can go forward and set up a, a schedule. Public safety.
There's about four late motions tonight. Calendar item number 28, motion presented by Councilor Rotundo, that the Revere City Council and Mayor request our federal delegation to support legislation to federally legalize marijuana.
Councilor Rotundo.
Speaks for itself.
Any other councilors?
I just wanna be on the record for a no here. Thank you.
Councilor Keefe's on the record as opposed.
Mr. President?
Councilor Sorino.
I would like to be on record as opposed as well.
Council, Councilor Visconti.
Aye as well.
Okay.
Aye as well.
I think it might be unanimous here. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed?
Is that a no?
You wanna do a roll call? Let's go a roll call.
I trust the counselor. I trust you, Mr. President, the vote I'm giving, but it's gonna pass at the federal level anyway.
On the roll. Call the roll.
Roll call on the motion, that the Revere City Council and Mayor request our federal delegation to support legislation to federally legalize marijuana. Councilor Janino.
Madam Clerk, I'm just not sure if I have to recuse myself from this, if I'm sending a recommendation to the federal delegation, is that a conflict?
Federal delegation? I don't believe so, as your state delegation.
Okay, great, no.
No, Councilor Guanasso?
Absent.
Absent. Councilor Keefe?
No.
No, Councilor McKenna?
No.
No, Councilor Morabito?
No.
No, Councilor Novoseltsky?
No.
No, Councilor Powers?
No.
No, Councilor Rotundo?
Absolutely, yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino?
No.
No, Councilor Visconti?
No.
No, Councilor, Council President Sembudo?
No.
No, the motion has been denied. Late motion.
Point their personal privilege.
Save your point.
We have it passed at the, at the state level, that's why I supported it at the federal level. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number 29, motion presented by Councilors Rotundo and Powers, that the city of Revere are looking to the feasibility of obtaining an easement from National Grid located within the green space at 420 Revere Beach Boulevard, the Jack Satterhouse, for the purpose of creating additional parking if possible.
Councilor Rotundo, I don't know how many motions you had in tonight, but go ahead.
So I've been speaking to Steve Post, Council Power's been working with this as well, Mr. O'Brien from Development Office, and many others. And the idea is to help basically relieve the parking issue that exists at the Satterhouse by utilizing the green space that's there. N-Grid has the easement, and the idea would be to get the easement back, or basically allow a parking lot to be put over the easement, which is done pretty much everywhere else. And that pretty much would help alleviate that and provide about 50 spots of parking for them, and at a very, relatively low cost. So that's pretty much what it is.
Do we happen to know if it's a high-voltage duct bank or not?
Actually, N-Grid was out there, and it traverses Oak Island Street, so at, at the end of the day, will there be a roadway off of that map or parking?
That's enough, good. Councilor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have spoken with Steve Post a few times regarding this. There are approximately between the staff, the residents that do not have parking because of the lack of parking, and the health aides that frequent the building down there, there's short about 70 parking spaces. And he indicated to me, if this could happen, this would certainly correct that situation with regard to parking. The problem is, it's not, not an easement they have. From what I understand, they own the property, National Grid. They own the property, at least from the Eastern County ditch, which goes to Oak Island, down to and beyond the Jack Satterhouse. I would, I think it's a, it's a, it's something we should try, and see what happens, and Steve does also. But I think the people that are gonna finally make this decision will be Hebrew Senior Life, which is based not in Revere, and the, yeah, yeah. So it's, I, I support it 100%. I hope it happens, but I think the, the other area we should be looking in now is to make that area, as I've said so many times before, from Revere Street down to Carey Circle, resident parking only, for the people that live in that area, not from everyone coming down.
That's another motion for another time. So, so this, this particular one, it looks like they'd be looking for an easement from National Grid to the Satterhouse or Hebrew Life or whatever.
Correct, correct.
They, they own the property.
They own the property, so we're at their mercy. But if it could happen, it would be great. So on the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Late motion presented by Councilor Sorino, that the mayor request representatives from Capital Waste to appear before the city council to discuss consistent missed pickups. A similar motion was filed in July 2020, and went totally ignored by Capital Waste.
Councilor Sorino.
Thank you, Mr. President. From a procedural standpoint, I try to stay away from late motions, but this one I feel needed to be filed, and needed to be filed today. So the weather is getting nicer, and, you know, the sun is out, the COVID pandemic is starting to, the restrictions are starting to ease up, life is starting to go back to normal. But 'tis the season to be jolly, but not in Revere with regard to our trash and yard waste pickup. Capital Waste, we as a city, as taxpayers, we pay capital waste to remove our solid municipal waste, our trash, our recycling, bulky items, and yard waste. And Capital Waste continues to forget pickups, and they continue to have missed pickups almost every week. And I, I've spoken with other ward councilors, and I know they, they have contacts, and they, they call Capital Waste, and Capital Waste comes out and they pick up, you know, the missed pickups. But Ward Six's trash days are on Thursdays and Fridays. So if I don't get the call until Friday, and even Friday afternoon, Capital Waste has gone home, you know, they're, they're not out on the streets. So my ward suffers because people who have missed yard waste, or missed recycling, or whatever it may be, the Capital Waste won't go out until, you know, either Monday or Tuesday. And sometimes it's the city that has to end up picking it up, and that's, that's not fair to, to our DPW. So I was talking with 311, and I, I just asked for a quick report of Capital Waste's missed pickups from May 1st of 2020 to date, to May 17th, 2021. And there were 58 missed bulky item pickups, 132 missed trash pickups, 94 missed recycling pickups, and 179 missed yard waste pickups, for a total of 463. And those are the only ones that are reported to 311. Those don't count the calls that we get as councilors, or the residents who say, screw it, I'll just put it out next week. So I think we have a problem with Capital Waste. And like I said, we're paying them for a service that they are not living up to, and I'm, I'm even more frustrated, because I filed this motion last year, and they just, you know, it, it went into, they, they never came before us. So I think it's time that we have somebody before us to explain why there are so many missed pickups. And I know what they're gonna say. They're gonna say that some people put their, their trash out late, or the yard waste out late, but that can't be for that many missed pickups. And like I said, I'm getting calls every, every yard waste day, every two weeks, at least three to four residents who are calling me. So this, this is a huge issue, Mr. President, and I hope that we can put this in public works and have them before us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilor Sorino, or 302, Councilor Sorino, very good motion. I, I agree, obviously, as a ward counselor, I've, I've easily received a half a dozen just the last few weeks. But definitely, this is a big call that I get on Fridays and Saturdays, as my ward is primarily around Fridays. And it's usually when it's too late. So Paul Argenzio then gets the next call, and he's been extremely responsive, so I really appreciate the DPW supporting us there. But I think on top of, you know, I know the trash is not easy business, it's, it's a really tough business. So I know that Capital, I, you know, I know a lot of municipalities use them, and, you know, quite frankly, they're probably the better, the better of the, of the, the larger groups out there. But of course, they have their flaws, we all, everyone makes their mistakes. I would like on top of this to see if we can establish an emergency hotline, so that the residents can get that quick fix on knowing that they're gonna get this issue resolved. Because just putting it into 311, they go, what do I do now? Do I leave it out there? When's it gonna get responded to? Do I bring it back in? Then they bring it back in, the truck goes by. Fortunately, when they get myself on the phone, or yourself, Councilor Sorino, they're getting more of an instant response, which they appreciate, but we're not always available. I mean, I'm always available, but even if I'm not, what if I was away? What if I was out of, out of pocket with a, with a phone, or whatever it may be? Then they, they're going through this process of bringing the trash back in, and just kind of, you know, going, oh, this stinks. Literally, no pun intended. So I would like to see if we could establish some sort of an emergency hotline, or maybe have Capital establish an emergency hotline, so that they can get an instant response. And I also wanna say, because I actually have a relative that works at Capital Waste and failed some of these calls, she certainly isn't, doesn't pick up the trash, and sometimes I call her directly, and I'm bugging her on her day off. So it's nice to have it in, but I think she doesn't like to answer my phones anymore. Thanks, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Great motion, Councilor Sorino. I also, when Ward One have a problem last month, it was the first time street sweeping was happening, and they left all the barrels in the street. The street sweeper couldn't get around to the barrels. Today, they put the blue barrels on the sidewalk, but they left the recycle out in the street. What I've done, because you have yours on Friday, so everybody's gone, but because I have mine on Monday, my trash pickup, I call Capital Waste directly and talk to the person, and they come back, and they, at last, when I called them and told them the barrels were out in the street, they came back and put them on the sidewalk. So that might be an option for you, but I just wanted to say, there's a problem, and thank you for addressing it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilor Morabito.
Thank you. In addition to what Councilor Sorino said with the facts of how many missed trash pickups there were, and how on top of DPW being responsive and collecting the trash when Capital Waste is not, this is something the city has to take into consideration when negotiating their contract with Capital, Capital Waste. Sure, there's not many great competitors near Capital that will come close to Capital Waste, but at the same time, we need to hold them accountable. In addition to that, there are calls that I get from Ward One all the way to Ward Six. So it's, like, I had one resident who wanted, his trash barrel was missing, so in order for him to get a new one, he had to file a police report, yes, a police report for a missing barrel. And then he, they have to provide the missing police report, the police report of the missing barrel to 311 in order to get a new one. But it was found that the barrel was across the street. And the reason it was across the street is because the trash workers do not place the trash barrels in front, where they got them. It ends up across the street, down the street, and if you're on the hill, like I am, sometimes it rolls all the way down the hill on a windy day. So you have a senior citizen trying to run, run, catch their barrel down the hill. And it's, you know, as interesting as that sounds, you know, an interesting day of chasing a barrel down Suffolk or Prospect or or Prospect or Ridge or Centennial Ave. It's not, it's kind of, it makes a funny movie, but it's not, in reality, it's kind of frustrating for some people. So we really have to hold them accountable come renegotiation of contract time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So this is going to end up in the Public Works Committee. But let me just make a statement here. I've been on this council 22 years. I remember long enough, I've been here long enough to remember when we had terrible trash haulers. Capital Waste happens to be one of the best in the state, one of the best. Now, they're very responsive every time I call them.
Point of information, just to rebuttal, because I wasn't sure if that point was toward me, because I did say Capital Waste is one of the bigger competitors.
Counselor.
Just want to clarify.
Don't interrupt me. Come on. So, but the bottom line here is, it's a big city. I know I've been guilty of putting my trash out after the trash people came. And I realized it too late, that I looked down the street. I saw all the barrels were flipped, you know, the lids were flipped up. So it meant that I did. So the bottom line here is, yeah, there's complaints. And yeah, 400 over a year and a half is probably not a lot. All right, over one year is probably not a lot, because I would dare say 40% of them are people that put it out like me too late. So bottom line here is, anything can be addressed. If we're looking for a solution, we can get that. And that's why this is going to Public Works. And I think, you know, we probably wouldn't get a better trash hauling company than Capital Waste. I'm sure this is going out the bit anyway. There'll be others. But we had waste management here. We had some real horrible, when you want to talk about calls of people not getting their trash picked up, you got to see when you have a bad hauler. At least Capital Waste is very responsive. If they make a mistake, if somebody files up, they correct it, and they correct it right away. So this is going to Public Works.
Late motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor request Mastot to install speed monitoring devices on Route 1A, North Shore Road, both north and southbound between John Avenue and Oak Island Street, and Oak Island Street and Revere Street. Further, that the Revere Police Department Traffic Division and the Massachusetts State Police be directed to increase traffic enforcement on Route 1A, North Shore Road.
Counselor Powers.
Counselor Zambudo's recused from that.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a motion about life and death on Route 1A. In the past 20 years, we've had at least three fatalities down there. This weekend, we had two more serious accidents, one on John Avenue and one on Revere Street. I have asked in a motion prior to this to have speed monitoring signs put up down there. The cost of those signs, from what I understand, is $4,000 or $5,000, maybe $6,000. So we're talking about $24,000. Do they stop people from speeding? I believe they do, because it makes people aware that they are speeding. Those signs should be put up ASAP. We need more enforcement down there. Enforcement costs money. I understand that. So let's put the men down there enforcing it, whether it be state or Revere. Let's write the tickets, and let's use that revenue to pay for the overtime that these people are causing us to spend this money down there. It's a very simple thing. I get more calls this weekend. It's insane the way this is being handled down there. So I would ask that the mayor set up a meeting with the state police and Revere Police, and let's get this thing going, and let's get some good enforcement down there. Two years ago, we had a car on Revere Street, coming through Revere Street on North Shore Road, go into a bedroom where a child normally slept. Thank God the child wasn't sleeping in there on that night. So this is a serious matter. We've got speed monitoring signs all around the city. Every, there's dozens of them up there. But there's none on North Shore Road 1A. It's the most dangerous road in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted. Point of personal privilege for Counselor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make a quick comment to my colleagues. You know, when I first got on the council, late motions were incredibly frowned upon. If someone put in a late motion, it was usually seen as something like sneaky or something negative. Because in a late motion, it doesn't go on the agenda, so it's not published, and the community can't see it for X amount of time. And I've noticed lately in council meetings, and I've been guilty of it too, that we've been putting a lot more in. And I just want to say, I've got calls from people, you know, it really is confusing. So as counselors, we have until the Thursday before to get these to the clerk. And if we don't get it in time, guess what? We have another meeting, and it can go on to the next one. I did that the other day. I sent Asha something that I thought about on Friday, and I just put it to the next meeting. So if it is an emergency, which I do think some of these we talked about, like Counselor Powers tonight, was an emergency. That was the perfect example of a good way to use a late motion. But I think, you know, we owe it to our constituents to let them see it ahead of time, to have it advertised on the agenda and do it the formal way. So I just want to, you know, caution my colleagues. It was always something that was frowned upon, and I think, you know, we're kind of straying from that a little bit, and we need to reel it back in.
Thank you, Counselor Janino. I don't normally do that, but this accident happened after Thursday. It happened on the weekends, and I felt to wait another couple of weeks isn't good. Thank you.
Okay. No further business. We're standard adjourned until May 24.